One and welcome. This is our informal session today, and Mr. Duhany, we're ready to go.
As the Mr. Mayor of the Council of the First District.
We're provided by federal lobbyists. They'll come and give city council an update on what's going on in the federal government, and they'll be introduced by our, they'll be introduced by Brent McKenzie, Director of Legislative Affairs.
I wonder if I could just mention real quick, council members Ross Hammond and Rouse will not be with us. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, Members of Council. Today, we're joined by our Federal Government Affairs Team from Becker and Polikoff, our friends Alfonso Lopez, Perry Adair, and Anthony Bedell. They'll provide us a quick update on the previous year's grant and earmark allocations that the city has received, and give us a preview of the upcoming year and some of the new regulations coming out of the new administration of President Trump. I'll turn it over to Alfonso now.
Thank you. Welcome, gentlemen.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for having us. As a representative of Becker and Polikoff, I have to say how incredibly honored we are to have the City of Virginia Beach as one of our flagship clients, and we are always proud of representing you on Capitol Hill and before the White House and the administration of the Army Corps and the other federal entities that we work with. With me today are Perry Adair and the incomparable Anthony Bedell. We're a bipartisan team that has been working together for several years now on behalf of the city, and I just want to go through our presentation really quickly, if I can work the technology. There we go. So, we are a national law and lobbying firm with over 50 years' experience. We've got a presence across the United States. We are diverse, which is one of the things that makes Becker, I think, very special in terms of how we are able to be effective for the city on Capitol Hill, not just reaching out to your delegation who are incredibly interested in the success and invested in the success of the City of Virginia Beach, but also members of appropriations from Florida, from Michigan, from California, from other parts of the country that we have relationships with that enable us to work closely with them on your behalf. So, we want to bring to bear all of these opportunities and these touchstones to make your requests as successful as humanly possible. We have, I like to say, local knowledge. I actually, in a previous life, between 1999 and 2005, I was your lobbyist at another firm, and I'm proud to say that I've had over a decade now of working with the city and your amazing staff. And then also, one thing that we're very proud of is, we were recently named by Bloomberg Government and one of the top-performing lobby firms in terms of effectiveness in all the United States. The next slide, if I can make it happen, there we go, is the team that works on the city and your request. My very much thinner and taller face is right there. Anthony and I are the co-lead lobbyists, but we also have Omar Franco, who is a longtime and very well-known Republican appropriations expert, Amanda Wood, who maybe is the best grants person in the entire federal government and of her, how effective she is, Clarence Williams, former Chief of Staff and very well-connected on several defense issues, and then the amazing Perry Adair, who makes us all look good. Next slide. I have, just by way of background, if you haven't met me before, I have over 30 years' experience working at the federal and Virginia legislative levels, was a former U.S. Senate staffer, Assistant Administrator of the SBA under President Barack Obama, and I was the head of Congress, all congressional legislative affairs for Virginia for four years when I worked in the Cabinet of Senator, or then Governor Tim Kaine. And then I also, some of you might know me, I'm a member of the Virginia House of Delegates, where I chair the Labor and Workforce Committee and essentially the Agriculture/Chesapeake and Natural Resources Committee, the committee that deals with all the environment issues in the state. Anthony, can you come on up?
Anthony Bedell, great to see you and then meet the new members of the council. My background is about 30-plus years as well in doing government relations, both at the federal level and for private sector companies, Fortune 5 covered in company. I was honored to serve in the Bush administration, where I worked for Secretary Elaine Chao at the U.S. Department of Labor. I also worked at the U.S. Small Business Administration, where I did a better job than he did in congressional affairs, and then went back to the private sector then in 2016, came back when Secretary Chao was named Secretary Designee of Transportation, and I worked in the Trump administration as well for her at the U.S. Department of Transportation. And then I've been at Becker for five and a half years, and we really enjoy representing the city, as Alfonso echoed earlier.
And just to brag on Anthony for a second, you might have seen something that was said about him in Politico recently, describing him as a lobbying firepower on Capitol Hill and with the new administration. And then also, in his position as the head of Congressional and Intergovernmental Affairs for the Department of Transportation for four years, he was known as the go-to person when it came to transportation projects and helping cities and municipalities across the country deal with their major transportation and transit projects. And so, he's a very good person to have on the team. So, this year, we've had a fairly successful year considering how much upheaval we've seen. We've gotten over 13.5 million, 13.7 million in grant funding for the city. Your team, just let me take it aside here, your staff, you should be incredibly proud of the quality and ability of the city's staff. And they make our jobs easier, but they are relentless in helping us pursue grants and federal funding for the city, and so they deserve to be commended. We have 12.5 million in preliminary earmarks in the pending FY 2025 appropriations process. And then, as we know, last year, we got in FY 24, 7.93 million in the final budget. We'll get in a little bit more detail of this in a second, but we are now on essentially three parallel tracks. We're dealing with the closing salvos of the FY 25 appropriations process while simultaneously working on the FY 26 appropriations process, and then also dealing with the reconciliation package that's consuming DC right now. In less than, or just over a week, there's also potential for a government shutdown because of the intransigence and the inability for the both sides to get, come together on the FY 25 appropriations bills, so we'll get into that a little bit more in a second. This year, or last year, as you know, we got 3.9 million for Rudy Inlets, 3 million for Alaskan Road, Phase 1B, 693,000 for Creed Straining Facility, and then 400,000 for the Coastal Zone Management Study through the Army Corps. This year, we have 10 million in the bill for I-264, 1.5 million for the Coastal Storm Management, Risk Management Study, and then 1 million for the Bow Creek Stormwater Park. One thing with regard to the federal grant funding, we've gotten continuum of care funding under HUD, 1.6 million for Homeland Security Grants, which we've used from the Port Security Grant Program, and then the Urban Search and Rescue System Program. We've gotten some Impact Aid Title VII funding, CDVG grants through HUD, around 6.3 million, Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grants, and then finally, the Edward Byrne, or the Byrne Justice, called Byrne JAG Grants for community-oriented policing. So, here's, here's what's going on, all right? Like I said, we are trying to be as diverse as we possibly can. We want to, there's an, it's an art as well as a science to working the appropriations process. You don't want to have all of your eggs in one basket. We're trying to broaden the playing field as much as we can so that we have funding coming through T-HUD and Labor H and CGS and some other programmatic opportunities through transportation and emergency preparedness. We will be as nimble as we possibly can if the FY 25 process breaks down and try to put some of those projects in the 26 plan. But we are also looking at some of the annual congressional authorization packages, including the Surface Transportation Reauthorization, Word of 26, which is the Water Resource Development Act. These are, I think, very good opportunities for the city to get additional funding. And then on top of that, let me just do a little bit of background about the way we do things. When we, on the Comprehensive Regional CR SRM study, I think everybody remembers back in 2021, you had been making this your top priority for a very long time because of what needed to happen, and it had not gotten funded. And what we were able to do is, we were, we needed this Corps of Engineers project to happen, and we needed to have it included in the Corps' next work plan. And after years of really no progress, working, I think tirelessly with our congressional delegation, the Army Corps, and the White House, we were finally successful, and we did it in three and a half months after being hired. The important component for us was the series of letters and phone calls that we had and that we coordinated with, with members of Congress and the White House, and the Assistant Secretary of the Army Corps for Civil Works, and the Chief of the Water Resources Division of the Norfolk District, Army Corps, the White House OMB Office, the Political Director of the White House, and then White House Legislative Liaison, being able to bring all of those pressure points to bear on this one top priority for the city, and we're able to break the logjam fairly quickly. And what we're, our goal is, we try to do that on every one of your projects, every one of your requests. So, going forward, there's going to be a bunch of opportunities for additional funding if things remain as they're supposed to, with in terms of brick funding, cops and cops funding, which is the Police and Fire Department Grants, and then also infrastructure bill opportunities, especially with surface transportation and connectivity. And Anthony, if you can come up and help us with, with the appropriations processes.
So, this is the part where it's going to be confusing in seeing how this plays out. Currently, Republicans and Democrats are in discussions to do a continuing resolution through the end of 2025, which means it continues the 2024 funding, which means no, none of your community-funded projects will be funded. So, if that happens, we'll have to look, to work with the city manager and Brent and the team to resubmit which ones we want to and other ones, the priorities of the council as well. The issue that they're having is, they don't have votes to pass the CR right now because many Republicans want to put a lot of the president's executive orders into the continuing resolution and make them permanent. That's a, some Republicans don't want that, some, and obviously, many Democrats don't either. So, that's the issue. They can't just pass it on Republican votes, they need Democratic support. If they don't work that out, it's potentially, you'll see a government shutdown at the end of next week. I don't know how long it will last, it could be a couple days. Sometimes they're short-term, sometimes they're longer. I experienced one that was four months when I was in the U.S. Department of Transportation. And then the other piece, as Alfonso pointed out, is FY 26's guidances are already being released. So, they want to punt FY 25 and just focus on 26, and then the reconciliation bills. So, that's just Congress, and there's a lot of nuance to that, but that's basically the battle that's going on right now as we speak, and we'll see how it plays out by the end of next week. The other piece is the Trump administration on grant awards and releasing formula funds. Those executive orders are set to run out probably at the end of March. We've seen some movement in EPA, Energy, U.S. Department of Transportation, where some formula funds and some grant funds are being released, some still aren't. I think that, obviously, this is causing a lot of stress for not only your constituents, but the city council and the, and the city manager. We are preaching, let, patience, let's see how this plays out, and I know that's very stressful because you being responsive with the military constituency here and also federal workers. And so, I think, I'll give you an example, the Virginia Port Authority, last year, got a $344 million Clean Ports Grant, and then that was frozen, it's now been opened up. So, they're drawing down on that to build 200 new container removers.
Last week.
Yeah. So, some of these are being slowly released. It's not unusual, like, we did a 90-day agency review when I was there in 1.0, it was a lot quieter. I think this approach has made and caused stress and not understanding the direction. So, I would just say, let's see what this looks like in March and April, but we will need to, I would advise, obviously, looking at contingency planning for some of the FY 25 or delayed earmarks coming months later than we would have normally received them. And that's what's happening with 24 as well. So, we're working very closely with staff on that. It's, it's a very interesting time, and so, we'll continue to work very closely with your team, and we monitor and send updates almost every other day on what's going on. And so, again, patience, and let's see how this plays out over the next, you know, 40 days.
So, one thing to be aware of also, as a part of the June 2023 debt limit agreement, if we don't have, if we have a CR, you're going to have a 1% cut across the board in, if Congress fails to reach a full funding agreement by April 30th. So, that will, part of the reason why you, I would lean towards us actually getting a deal is that the implications of a 1% cut to some of the agencies are so intense that they can't make those kinds of cuts, and they have to have a deal like the Pentagon.
And they have to, they have to fund defense. That is a must, they have to do that. So, that's actually positive, obviously, for this area, but that, they can't let the Defense Department lapse.
And so, with that, I would say that, just to echo what Anthony just said, this is unprecedented. It is a very fraught environment in DC right now, but at the same time, I think patience is the, the major word with a capital P. I think most of this will play itself out, and what is good about our team is that we are bipartisan. We are able to go into any office at the White House through Anthony and a bunch of folks in our firm who are solid Republican voices or former Trump officials, and then in the same token, we're able to go into every Democratic office in the delegation and with a lot of the career officials as well. We're open to any questions you might have, but let me just also make one plug, Mr. Mayor. Andrew Damon and Brent McKenzie are rock stars, and
We know that.
All right? And you don't want to tell that to them in their face, I appreciate that, but we duly, we cannot speak highly enough about the quality of your staff and relative to what we experience with other communities, and so, you should be commended and lauded for that.
Okay. Any questions or comments worth?
Thank you, Mayor Diamond. Just a quick question about the presentation, and best of luck, and we're rooting for you, of course. On your grants, there, are all, are those all of the grants, or do the staff obtain grants in addition to this team? Is BB, BB Trail, I think that was a grant, and a lot of grants, I think, Stormwater, Fund Referendum?
It's not all the grants, so, between Human Services and Housing and Neighborhood Preservation, there are some that are calculation-based on census. These are the ones that take an extra effort on glue.
Right. There are certain formula grants, and so, what we try to do also with these competitive grants is, we try to engage the congressional delegation as well as local and other federal voices to help support our efforts and support that grant process.
Yeah, and we, we also help your team kind of guide the executive summaries where, obviously, there's a new administration, so the priorities have changed. It's going to be safety, innovation, job growth, economic development, return on federal dollar investment. So, that'll be kind of a different criteria that the staff is easily going to be able to adjust to. We just have to say that back to the great reviewers in this new administration.
Okay. Josh and Hutch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you all very much for your work for us. On the grants that we've been awarded, but where we've not signed grant agreements to, I guess, firm up or accept the funds, what is the risk where, you know, obviously, there's a lot going on in the federal government right now? So, are those funds at risk to the extent, you know, we haven't locked it in with a grant agreement, or if there's been an award, is there some sort of protection?
It's been, as we've seen, to be determined, some have been moved forward to be signed, some have not yet. We haven't seen any, you know, you've seen the cuts from DOGE and stuff, but we haven't seen any funds granted that were awarded, maybe not signed, clawed back yet. But I would, I was cautioned, and like I said, we need to see how this plays out. But remember, I mean, a number of these grants go to red and blue states, so there's going to be pushback from, from senators from Texas if that funding doesn't go, and senators from Minnesota. I mean, they, you know, when the first executive order was issued, it was 20 bipartisan senators that went to the White House and say, whoa, what are you doing? And then they revised it. And so, I think that's why we're preaching patience, that Congress is finally going to see how that plays out and then start to, you know, put their will forward as these things are seen. Yeah.
And also, just to put a finer point on that, is that every agency and every department is, is doing it differently, and so, we're having to navigate that as well, so some are moving much faster than others, or slower.
Hey, Hutch.
Like, the port example, that moved very fast. And so, I think, you know, we've seen a lot of energy grants being released, and some at U.S. DOT, HUD, so it's slowly moving. It's just, I don't, I couldn't give you the timeline, but, you know, we always urge patience.
If you all speak, speaking to the microphone, that's another way they can pick you up there, but it's okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, mine's about, when you said about the award breakdown, continued. One of them here is
I have some experience with the National, the Urban Search and Rescue Grant. I believe it's our longest continuous grant. We first started getting it in 1992. My question is, what, what is that, when you say the, what did you all have to do with that, getting that? Did we get a little bit more, was it to fight for it? What was, what was your point there when you were talking about it?
Oh, the Urban Search and Rescue one, we had to talk to the
We listed it, and we went to Senator Kane Warner to get letters of support.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure there was nothing to change, or
No, 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 no. We just always, Brent always asked us to back-end the support, where we get, you know
It's been 1.3 million for as long as I can remember. I just
We want to keep it going so that, so Warner and Kane, Kiggins all wrote
Okay, bud, I appreciate it.
Also, I mean, your regional Urban Search and Rescue Response System is one of the best, and it's copied around the country.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, anybody else at this point? Now, let, let me just say, you know, and, you know, having taught government budgeting, you know, one of the biggest problems we have is the elephant in the room, that for decades, you know, we were allowed to accumulate $36 trillion of debt. And, you know, that's, the interest on that alone, from what I understand, exceeds the DoD and Medicare, okay? And, you know, simple budgeting, that is not money that's going there, that's not going to goods and services. It's not going to roads, bridges, and infrastructure throughout the country. It's not going to the Department of Defense, it's not going at the healthcare, things of that nature. And, you know, that's a bipartisan problem. And, you know, I think that one of the things they're going to have to do, you know, we got, we got to confront that. And because, you know, if we stay on the track of borrowing and borrowing, the outcome's not going to be good. And, you know, once again, this impacts all the states, and it particularly impacts the localities, because that's money not coming to us
Right.
That we have to, you know, you know, fill in the blank on. So, but, once again, thank you for doing what you do, because, you know, considering things, I think you folks have all done a remarkable job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, the next presentation will be provided by Nancy Hellman and also from members of our Advertising Advisory Committee. It's to give city council a forefront review of our advertising campaign for the next season.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, Mr. Duhany and Mr. Styles. We're excited to be here today to show you the newest evolution of our marketing campaign that we use to advertise to guests coming to Virginia Beach. The CVB marketing team, with the guidance of our Advertising Advisory Committee, have created an inspiring campaign to market Virginia Beach as a vibrant coastal destination. You'll see the efforts over the past year before we close with one of our 30-second ad spots. But before we share that update with you, I wanted to introduce you to Delsino Miles and John Zirkle, the Chair and Vice Chair of the Advertising Advisory Committee, to share a little bit about the goal of the Advertising Advisory Committee and introduce you to its members.
Welcome, Delsino and John.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, friends and family, enemies too. It's our pleasure to be here to share where we are with AAC. I was privileged to be appointed as the Chair, and so, thank you all for appointing us to another non-paying job, I mean, opportunity to serve. But we have a very good cross-section of folks, as you can see up here, people that are passionate about the city, from all across the city, in each of your districts and various disciplines and backgrounds, and so, we are a great team of folks, and I have with me my, my co-chair here, the original Jay-Z, John Zirkle.
That was good. That was really good.
Don't sue me, Jay-Z.
I was going to say, someone might have some comments about that. You know, the Advisory, Advertising Advisory Council was established in 1995 to enable citizens and organizations to provide input to the CVB's tourism advertising. It's been almost three decades since its establishment. The city's grown, changed, expanded into sports tourism, a variety of other topics, and short-term rentals, new restaurants, attractions, it just keeps growing. We felt it was a good time to look at the current makeup of the council and model the AAC with the help of Councilman Remick and Council Lady Dr. Millie Ross Hammond. And today, the membership of the AAC reflects the changes in the tourism industry as well as the diversity of our city. And I just want to say, I've been serving on this committee for almost 10 years, I think, and it needed to be refreshed. And I was telling Councilman Remick before the meeting, his leading that charge along with Dr. Ross Hammond was a big part of why this committee is as robust as it is today and with the experience we have on it today. So, thank you very much for that, and for all of council for putting your trust in The, the goal of the AAC is to advise high-level, the marketing and media strategies for the Convention of Visitors Bureau with an overarching Visit Virginia Beach brand. The Convention of Visitors Bureau uses the budget allocated from the Tourism Advertising Fund, the TAP, to place advertising outside of Hampton Roads region, highlighting Virginia Beach as a desirable destination for leisure, travel, both domestic and international, sports tourism, meetings, conventions, and group tours. That's a lot to advertise, and it takes a whole team to do it.
And lastly, we just want to invite the public to attend our meetings, they are public meetings. So, we meet every month at the Convention of Visitors Bureau's main office at 9:00 a.m., and our next meeting will be March 20th, where we're going to take a little bit different step. We wanted to pause and have a workshop where we really take a look and have a deep dive in terms of what we want to get out of this particular exercise with the AAC. So, what are the goals, what does success look like? So, we're going to take the time to have a real, deep discussion as a group and come back with some goals that we all agree on and, and share with you in a year from now those successes. So, we invite you to attend those if you can. Those meetings are always open and available to the public. Now, we'll turn it back over to the boss lady, Nancy.
So, thank you, Delsino, thank you, John, thank you so much for your service and your volunteerism, and thank you to all of the AAC. Now, let's get to the review of our campaign. Our marketing team has a complex, multi-channel marketing approach that goes beyond just paid media. Before we dive into the newest campaign, we wanted to highlight some of the non-campaign marketing efforts taking place at the CVB to sell our destination to prospective visitors, meeting planners, sports planners, group tour operators, and more. This video provides a quick recap of some of those marketing initiatives. It highlights our previous campaign, Happiness is a Real Place, miscellaneous marketing materials and collateral, social media, and many other things, including our new Visit Virginia Beach website that's under development and will be launching in August of 2025 with a, with a focus of encouraging ADA compliance across the site. of encouraging ADA compliance across the site.
We're on a search for the ultimate cheat meal. This is Cheat Meal Virginia Beach.
Can I get this to go?
So before we share our newest campaign creative, we wanted to briefly touch on an overall media strategy. This determines who we're talking to and how we're talking to them so we can be the most effective in every possible way in continuing our goal to bring visitors to the city of Virginia Beach. Within our marketing plan, we use different tactics to engage our audience at each step of their planning and booking journey. The chart on the left is our marketing funnel. It shows the various tactics used in our media planning and which part of the funnel each tactic addresses. Awareness, engagement, conversion. This ensures us that we're meeting every potential visitor where they are and helping them realize their vacation planning dream. These are our core domestic media markets. And they're based on data showing who is visiting our destination, engaging with our websites, content, and more. These markets are where we focused our high-cost, high-impact media efforts. But they're not the only markets that we're in, and I'll explain a little bit more about that as we move on. As you can see, a lot of our visitors come from places that are drivable. Our drivability from large markets such as Washington, DC is a key advantage for our destination and a focus area of our efforts. While we do target certain geographic drivable areas with our high-cost media, we utilize behavioral-based targeting approach overall. This means that a consumer anywhere in the world can receive a Visit Virginia Beach ad if they express certain travel-ready indicators. This helps us reach anyone who may be more likely to book a vacation in Virginia Beach in an efficient and cost-effective way. For example, if someone searches something like East Coast beach destination in Florida, Ohio, or even abroad, they'll receive relevant ads to encourage them to further engage with our destination and therefore book with us. In addition to target audience, media timing and budget allocations is also important to our strategy. The flow chart on the left showcases our media flighting and timing for our domestic leisure spend. The pie chart on the right shows that how we spend that is just how we spend that and where it's distributed. To be as cost-effective and efficient as possible, we can't be every place all the time, so we strategically spend and make sure that we have a good mix of always-on media. That means we're always on and always talking to our potential guests. We build out these flow charts to help us maximize our visibility. The foundation of our paid media efforts is the work that we do on our owned media space through our social media and content channels. Across our social media platforms such as Facebook, Instagram, and YouTube, as well as our blog on visitvirginiabeach.com, we're always telling the stories of our destination in a deeper way, more authentic, more Virginia Beach, with one goal top of mind, and that's more engagement. These content channels are powerful drivers of engagement of our audience by focusing on making the content that is optimizing the current trends and also entertaining. These platforms help us holistically tell the story of our destination and the diversity of experiences that you can have here. At the end of this presentation, we'll put up some QR codes on our social media that will lead you to our social media channels. We hope that you will like us, friend us, and follow us. We divide our leisure content into five brand pillars, and that's beaches and outdoors, arts and entertainment, food and drinks, shopping and history. This ensures that we have an overall awareness and we can speak to our core audience as well as fully representing all of what Virginia Beach has to offer. We do this through video series and roundup posts and long-form posts and short-form posts. In any way that anybody wants to see it, we're talking to them. Outside of our leisure brand pillars, we also focus on our core markets within sports, tourism, meetings and conventions, group tour, spaces to speak to meeting planners and event organizers from around the country. This all leads us to our new campaign, Happiness Is. Happiness Is is not a wholesale new campaign for us, just an evolution of Happiness is a Real Place. Happiness can be catching a wave, building a sandcastle, or a cold ice cream cone on a hot day. Happiness can be listening to a band. Happiness can be a delicious and tasty meal. Happiness can be just spending time with your friends and family. Whatever your happiness is, you can find it here. Our campaign takes many forms, so you can see what some of our ads look like on this screen. You can also see them on some of our major networks like Netflix and Disney Plus and on billboards around the country. Here are just a few examples. You can also see that we promote the, all of our venues, all of our activities, all of our activations around the city. So this is one of our 30-second ad spots. Throughout this campaign, we'll run various commercials, whether they're 15 seconds, 30 seconds, or something in between. And this is a specific media buys that we place all over the country to help showcase Virginia Beach.
What does happiness mean to you?
Being in the ocean with you, watching you catch super fun waves.
In Virginia Beach, happiness is breaking barriers and savoring the sunshine.
I couldn't pick a better place or a better person to be with. This is what makes me happy.
Happiness is going all out.
And taking it all in.
Here, happiness is wherever you make it. Find yours in Virginia Beach.
So in closing, I would like to thank city council for the opportunity to be here today. I would really like to thank our Advertising Advisory Committee and our Chairs, Delsino and John, thank you so much for being here, and our Advertising Agency of Record, the Miles Partnership, who also, Scott is here today, so thank you, Scott. And Finn Partners, who is our Public Relations Agency of Record. Thank you very much also to Councilmember Remick and Dr. Ross Hammond for helping us modernize the AAC and get to work. But we hope that everybody will please follow us, like us, and join us on our social media journey. If you are outside of our destination, you'll be served up our ads on a regular basis. But if you're inside of Virginia Beach, it's a little more challenging. So please like us, follow us, and help us share the message. I'm available for questions if you have.
Questions at this point? Of worth.
Thank you all, team advertising, for the presentation and the update. And it was good to rebuild the team, and I think it's going to be very beneficial. So just a couple of comments. Can you turn to page eight? Because this is a topic that I'm getting ready to ask about. There's an area close to us that's not advertised yet, and that's called in-market advertising, which is an issue that many say we should be doing, but we don't do. It's cost extra money. In my opinion, we should be doing it. We're addressing it. But Nancy, can you speak to that for a minute? I know it's a little touchy, but I think we should take up questions like this because there's an argument, there's a lot of folks really close to here that can come and spend a lot of money.
Yes. So the TAP fund ordinance dictates that our spend is out of market outside of the Hampton Roads area with the goal of bringing guests in from outside of Hampton Roads into Virginia Beach to leave economic impact into our city. So if that's something we'd like to explore in the future, that would certainly take some council action and assistance in helping us get there.
If I could just follow up. So if you could differentiate between the tip fund and the TAP fund, where does the TAP money come from? And if we did do that, yes, I would, my recommendation would be to keep the same amount at the level, but just go into either another fund or somehow to plus up the TAP fund or in-market advertising. So where does the TAP money come from?
So the Tourism Advertising Program Fund is funded through a flat tax that's charged per hotel room night. So essentially, the guests that come to Virginia Beach help fund this program and keep it. It's like an ecosystem. They come to Virginia Beach, they leave their money in Virginia Beach. We spend the money on advertising, and then they come back to Virginia Beach. It also has a 1% hotel tax and a half a percent on restaurants and meals.
And just one last follow-up. So one benefit of, and how much money do we spend in advertising about per, it's a lot of money, but one of the benefits, you get the answer, is that it does market our city in a place to do business, to move to. So we can't necessarily put our finger on that, but it is a great benefit to our city.
Yes. So we spend about $5.3 million, which is about 73% of our entire media spend, just on domestic leisure travel to Virginia Beach. That's, again, encouraging folks all around the world, especially domestically, to come to Virginia Beach to enjoy their vacation getaway, for whatever reason they would like to get away, whether it's a sporting event, a convention, a meeting, a family gathering, or just the need to put their toes in the sand.
Good cash, Jeff.
So I'm thankful for your presentation. Thank you so much. Right? I'm a big fan of it. If you can put a number on the revenue that's generated from your marketing from last year, what would that number be?
Well, thank you very much. Yeah, we study this every year and we, in the fall, host a state of tourism event and welcoming about 14 million visitors and $3.4 billion in direct spend to the city of Virginia Beach is a big deal. And we spend a lot of time focused on data and focus on following the trends and following need period times and times when we are full and need to maybe focus on other areas and the best way to bring folks into the city. So yes, we spend a ton of time studying who's coming here, why they're coming here, how they're coming here, and how we can get them to come back.
Thank you.
Hey, Jeff.
Thank you very much for the presentation and for your work. The videos, the video, the last one we saw was great, and it reminded me why I moved here 18 years ago. And I know this has been a topic of conversation for several years in terms of how tourism marketing, then economic development and workforce recruitment kind of work hand-in-hand. We're selling lifestyle to tourists. Really, I mean, we can sell lifestyle to potential residents and leverage that messaging in two different directions. So I'm interested to hear what kind of coordination you have with economic development and how we can present our, you know, a good face forward to people who want to come and relocate here for.
Yeah, I would definitely say then at a destination like Virginia Beach, economic development and tourism work hand-in-hand. I would say economic development relies on the amazing lifestyle provided by our resort community and the rest of our community that has so many great attractions and things to do for people that want to move here and be a part of our life, living the life, like we like to say. And then on the other side of that, our tourism community relies on those new activations and those new partnerships and those new developments to help enhance our community and raise the tide. So yes, we are working together. We actually have had several meetings already and another one coming up very soon to talk about the best way to utilize assets and ensure that when we're marketing around the country, we have a similar look and feel. And when people see Virginia Beach, they feel Virginia Beach in the same way.
Anybody else? You know, I'm going to give you a little pink peek about what I'm going to be talking about in the next presentation on Atlantic Park. But I was on-site today for something, and I'll tell you. You know, what we're going to have there is going to be another wow factor. You know, I mean, I was pleasantly surprised by the magnitude and, you know, what is coming is going to be another draw. And when you think about all of the events that we're having now, what was at Point Break with the reggae, and you talk about chocolope, which is very popular, when you talk about sand soccer, when you talk about, you know, so many different activities, you know, coming out there, you know, just bringing people, but not only, you know, folks from all over, but locals, you know. And I'll tell you what, we've got a lot to be proud of.
Thank you.
And we've got a lot to, obviously, you know, the professionalism of the presentation and everything. You know, Virginia Beach, every year is becoming more and more a destination. And when you bring people in, whether it be the sports center or, you know, tournaments, you know, they get to see Virginia Beach, maybe they come back and spend some time in the summer here. So I'll tell you what, there is some passive marketing that we have just by attracting people to come to Virginia Beach for Shamrock Marathons or, we've got a lot going on. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So Mr. Mayor, members of council, the next briefing will be provided by Emily Archer, Deputy Director for Economic Development. She'll give city council an update on the Atlantic Park project, including construction progress and timelines.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Thank you for having me. I am, the managers mentioned, here to brief you on the status of Atlantic Park, exactly two months away from the first venue show, May 4th, here on March 4th. This is the city's largest public-private partnership to date, and there are lots of partners on the screen. A big thanks right now to Venture Realty, WM Jordan, and Live Nation that are all working at breakneck pace to get this venue open in time for the first show. It is a very, it's a three-block project between 20th Street and 18th Street at our oceanfront and Pacific Avenue and Baltic Avenue, and consists of 300 multifamily units of housing. These will be leased apartments, 106,000 square feet of retail and restaurant, mostly on the ground floors, 10,000 square feet of office, 20 surf bungalow units, a 3,500-person entertainment venue that, there are retractable doors that open to an outdoor amphitheater that has up to 5,000 for events, and then two parking garages consisting of 1,475 parking spaces and a half mile of rehabilitated public streets surrounding the venue. And as you can see on the screen, a 2.7-acre surf lagoon just for surfing that can pump out 1,000 waves per session, per minute? I think it's per minute. Everything in yellow is the city's assets or the Development Authority's assets and is the public portion of the project. Percent complete is up on the screen, so the ocean is to your back in this image, Pacific Avenue is in the ground plane, and you're looking west, if you were a bird in the sky, 20th Street to the right and 18th Street to the left. You can kind of see the three blocks under development now. The two parking garages are on that far block and the closer right building. You can see these percentages are budget percent complete latest to date, with the parking garages the furthest long at 89%. Some recent construction photos. We were purposely tried to find current photos that match some of the renderings you saw early in the process for what was being designed. So on the top left is the rendering of what the stage will look like within the entertainment venue, courtesy of Live Nation. And then the picture right below it is the current view of that same view from the mezzanine looking down to the stage underway. The top right was a rendering that was shown to you early in the process of what some of the artistic elements within the entertainment venue. This is what we call the parametric wall, so some of the wooden slats and a cool geometric pattern. Some of the artistic touches are really coming to life, as you can see in that bottom right photo. Surf lagoon, as it currently sits, doesn't have water in it yet, but that's coming soon. And the long building is the mechanics of the surf lagoon that will create the waves. The two parking garages are shown on the right, the top ones at 20th and Pacific. The north garage, that'll be accessed off of 20th Street and has about 400 spaces in it. And then the Baltic garage on the northwest block on the south, or in the bottom right image, has about 1,000 spaces that'll be accessed off of Baltic Avenue. And then the mezzanine view that you just saw a little further back on the bottom left. Anticipated delivery for all these elements with a bird's eye again is, May 4th is the opening show at the entertainment venue. Live Nation has announced 23 shows so far this offseason, or I'm sorry, this summer season, 11 of which will use that outdoor amphitheater area. It could be up to 70 to 100 shows, though, we're told, and up to 25 in that outdoor area. The surf lagoon should open by July. The parking garages should open with the entertainment venue in May. Some of the retail on the ground floor should open this May as well, but that'll be opening throughout the project throughout the summer. By the fall, all the mixed-use residential should open, as well as the final offsite improvement. So the streets around the entertainment venue, 20th Street. the entertainment venue, 20th Street, 19th Street, Northern Arctic Avenue should all be open by May. 18th Street and Southern Arctic Avenue will still be under construction, but should open fully by the end of the year, but be delivered by the fall timeframe. And then I'm going to move just south of 18th Street here on the last slide to also give you a heads up. There are some city and development authority-owned spaces currently where the construction trailers sit that we're working to turn into temporary parking lot for an additional 165 spaces by July. This is a temporary parking lot under our current provision that can exist until 2027, but we are going to pave it and light it for safety concerns and, you know, usability at the oceanfront in the meantime. This was very brief, but I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
Okay, any questions or comments at this point? You know, like I, yeah, Rosemary?
So, May 4th is coming.
Yes.
Big day. And how comfortable do we feel like it's going to be ready? We're going to be ready.
Yes, we are in almost daily discussions with our development partners to ensure that it opens May 4th, and we have a good degree of confidence that we can make that date without a, if it takes shift work, we will get there if we need to, but everybody's working very hard towards that goal of May 4th.
Will the parking garages and everything be ready for the audience?
That's the goal, yes.
We better.
City code is hard.
We hope so.
Worth.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Archer, for the update. I just want to shout out, really, you, and you said it early on, kudos to the developer, Venture Realty, and also the contractor, WM Jordan. They are really working very hard to deliver this on May 4th, and I look forward to it.
Yeah, Josh.
I'll just chime in. I mean, the city and the public, obviously, have an investment here, but the private sector does too. And it's, it's the biggest public-private we've ever done as a city. It's $350 million. And aside from the developer partner and the contractor, this has been probably your every day, you and Kathy and the rest of the team. So, and you're, and we, Worth and I, as council liaisons, we see that a little bit more ground level, you know, because we're engaged with you and we see how responsive you are, and we really, really do appreciate it. Because this is a tremendously important project. We're gonna get it right. It's not we gotta get it right, we're gonna get it right. And it'll, 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 it'll be something for all of us to be very, very proud of. And it will attract people who wouldn't have otherwise come here.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? You know, I was with the construction management team this morning, and I'm confident that May 5th is going to be, you know, a go.
May 5th, what then? What about May 4th?
Oh, May, May 4th. Oh, yeah. Well, that too. Sorry about that. I guess I gotta change my calendar. Yeah. No, no, but, but I'm just going to say, you know, this has been an eight-year odyssey that is coming to a close. And the construction started a couple of years ago. And, you know, let me put it this way, the lump of clay that they started with is really starting to take some dramatic, you know, shape there. And this is going to be a point of pride, you know, for our city. But, you know, once again, you know, we do the ground breakings, and then we do the ribbon cuttings. Before the groundbreaking, a tremendous amount of work goes in. And in this case, this project, it was a couple of years before the groundbreaking. And then all the work being done, and then we do the ribbon cutting. And I'll tell you what, we just, a lot of people get a lot of credit for coming together, overcoming obstacles, and, you know, through any adversity, finding opportunity. But when all is said and done, this is going to be one magnificent project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any council liaison reports?
Any council comments?
Yeah.
Stacy.
The, Rosemary and I met with the school modernization committee last week, and we got a very sobering briefing from our budget director, Kevin Shackler. And working with the school board came to the realization that we not only have fiscal concerns, but we have debt, debt limitation concerns that need to be addressed. And the city, we only are responsible for half the budget. The school board gets the other half. And so we need the cooperation of all concerned to address the issues that we have going forward. And I think it was sobering, but the folks on the school board side had grasped what we're looking at and committed to do their part in addressing the issue. Rosemary, have anything?
Yes, thank you, Stacy. Appreciate what you had to say. And just, the school board has made a couple of really good decisions that they need to be complimented on. And one is moving the sixth-grade campus of Bayside to Bayside Middle. And that's going to save about $1 million in operating costs a year, which is a really good thing. Because as we know, that operating is year after year after year. So that's, that's going to be good. Plus, it's good for all those kids to be back, I think, under the same roof. And then the other decision that they have made is Betty F. Williams. I think we were all concerned, especially going through that PPA process of Betty F. Williams and the condition that was in, and the condition that the children are in. And building a new one was going to be about $150 million. Is that right? And so they have come to the conclusion that they're going to add some wings or onto some of the other buildings that are already in place. I think Newtown is one, and Diamond Springs is the other. And instead of $150 million, it's, I don't know, it costs $7 million. That's going to be a huge savings, and they need to be complimented on that. So the next big thing will be Princess Anne High School, which I think affects Josh's district and Stacy's district, and it's our oldest high school. And it's coming in at a pretty big price tag. And there's some other things that they have in their CIP budget that is pretty expensive. And so there's going to be some hard decisions that need to be made. And Kevin has offered to help them get through it. So it's my hope, and I think probably a lot of you, that they are able to come to the conclusion to go ahead and start moving forward with Princess Anne High School. Because the longer you delay it, the price tag just keeps getting up and up and up. So it's going to be an interesting year, but we're encouraging them on our side, please tell me if I'm wrong here, Patrick, to please figure out a way to go ahead and move forward with that. Really like to see them move forward with Princess Anne High School.
And I think this is reflective of the challenges we're going to have over the next couple of months. There are going to be a number of conversations like this. And once again, the cost of government has just significantly risen since 2018. And from what I understand, back in 2018, it would have cost over $200 million to build Princess Anne. Now, it could go as high as over $500 unless some modifications are met. And this given all of the other CIP challenges that we have as a city. And, you know, we got to confront this, and we have to prioritize. But I thank the council liaisons for the discussion, and it had to be a tough discussion. Okay, anybody else? Yeah.
Well, I see that, Arch. Anybody can win a state championship, high school state championship one time. We've had Cox High School wrestling, this won it two years in a row. And great showing. And I would like to see us do something to recognize that.
I can wrestle him.
I would love to do that, if we could do that.
Yeah. Yeah, let's do a formal recognition. We can do that.
Not to finish on a sad note, and I'm sure you'll talk about it a little bit, but on Saturday, obviously, we had a very tough remembrance and funerals. And the, the outpouring of support from the business community and the hoteliers and everybody else, and the mom and pops. And I joke and talk about the diner a lot. The diner's got a special collection jar there, and, you know, so everybody, everybody's doing it. And, you know, obviously, it hurts to lose two fine gentlemen so young, especially in the families. And then all the, all the connections that come out of it are brutal, right? It's gut-wrenching. But just from, from the public safety side, I just, I know they appreciate all of our support in us being there. It's, it's, it's never good when you do the last alarm, and then they're playing Amazing Grace on the back pipes. It's usually not good for the home team. But there wasn't, I don't think there was a dry on the house at that point, and it was full. We looked around, there was, I don't know what the capacity is there, but we were, I think the fire marshal wasn't paying attention. So just the filing in, you know, as we watched them, you know, when we got seated and then watched them file, watched all the officers in the public safety file in, and then the length of, of the police and EMS vehicles and fire and council members that had to emergency park on Kempsill Road. You know, we, I think for a part of it, we should be proud for what we did.
No, well said. You know, during such a time, it is difficult to find words. You know, a little over a week ago, our city's foundation was rocked. And, but through it all, and Hutch, you know, I'm grateful that you brought that up, but it was a community response that I really think reflects the character and community of Virginia Beach of what we have that a lot of cities don't have. You know, I found out over my tenure as mayor that Virginia Beach is a city of faith, of many faiths, and it's the glue that holds us together in such a magnificent and unique way. Then during times like this, you can count on community coming together. How many times have we talked about Virginia Beach being, you know, we're the most caring community in the city? We've been recognized as that. And unfortunately, these traffic, tragic events. But, you know, Hutch, if I'm not mistaken, I think Rock Churchill's around 5,000. And I saw people standing. And, and then even at the viewing, you know, the night before, you know, I got there half an hour before the place opened, and there were probably a couple hundred people in line. It was an outpouring of love, empathy, sadness. But there was a feeling of community. And, you know, when you think about the families, the friends, but you also got to think about the police officers and the fire personnel, and you got to think about EMS, whose job is to go out there. And we have people, you know, Virginia Beach is a city of heroes. And, you know, I was speaking to somebody who is a widow of a police officer. And the statement was made, you know, these are professions, when the spouse and family member or friend leaves the door, there's no guarantee that they'd be coming home that night. You know, that's a reality of the profession, the professions that we have that make us the safest city of a city our size and throughout our nation. And, but once again, if we can find one thing that, you know, came out, you know, through the adversity, that we found the opportunity for such a community response, you know, I think a lot of people in this, you know, city should be proud. Thank you. Josh?
Thank you, Hutch and Mayor. And I know all of us, our heart goes out to not just the families and those directly impacted, but certainly our public safety and law enforcement community. And I've used the opportunity the last week or so, just to pick up a phone and call, call a couple folks that I know who are police officers or firefighters and check in on them and just say hello and thank you. Because I know the, the community as a whole, including EMS, is hurting right now. And you're right, we are a city of heroes. And on behalf of, just switching gears a little bit, Councilmember Rouse is not here today. I believe she just sent us an email just a few moments ago requesting support for a resolution next month, mid-April, for recognition of the month of the military child. And on Tuesday, April 15th, is what she was hoping for. It is known as Purple Up Day, as purple is the official color of the military child, because it's a combination of the colors of all branches of, of the military. And the resolution, should it be acceptable, all of you would be presented to the Armed Forces YMCA located in our city, actually in District 9, Independence and our pleasure house, to recognize and honor all the services and support they provide to military families in Virginia Beach and Hampton Roads. So just be on the lookout. If you're supportive of that resolution, just reply and let everybody know. And I certainly am. So we'll have that to look forward to next month.
And, you know, I think that, you know, speaks of the, when we talk about the heroes, obviously, we include the military. And people that have fought in wars, but once again, you know, I always think about the unsung heroes, you know, the families that stayed behind when, you know, sailors who unprolonged deployments or, you know, Marines, Army, or whatever branch, you know, go to a foreign country in harm's way, you know, the family and the support groups of, you know, the friends. And, you know, we, we, you know, Patrick and I and Rosemary have a very, you know, close relationship with our Navy partners. And it is just paramount that, you know, we recognize that when we talk about Virginia Beach being a city of heroes, it's a lot of people. And a lot of those are the unsung heroes that get behind the people that are in harm's way and out there doing incredibly remarkable things.
I just want to just echo on what you were saying, Chief Hutch. I'm so grateful for the Police Benevolent Association, PBA, and their dedication and work to our police officers, men and women. They provided light refreshments at Kempsill High, just a great organization, as well as the Police Foundation, also a great organization. And with that, I'd like to transition to the Public Works. And the reason I have to say this, because I should have mentioned this before, but a gentleman by the name of Maurice Wellington went above and beyond in his duty with Public Works. And I'm grateful for what Public Works does. And we're talking about unsung heroes. They are as well, behind the scenes, in the dark, in the cold. And so I want to just make sure to mention our Public Works Department and grateful for them as well.
Yeah. And I think we mentioned, you know, and, you know, it wasn't that long ago, we had a major snowstorm. And I think the compliments that we've heard, that Public Works coming out, tell you, the roads were, you know, clean in no time. And a lot of people noticed this. And some other cities did not have that type of response. But, you know, once again, those unsung heroes that, you know, 3:00 in the morning are away from their families out cleaning roads. And, you know, and the other thing is too, it's, I know this seems simplistic, but when there's a big beach event with a lot of people, and you wake up the next morning, there was no litter, the peaches, manicure, and things. People are out there working. no litter, the peaches, manicure, and things, people are out there working hard. Yes, unsung heroes really defines Virginia Beach. Okay, anybody else? All righty, how about agenda review?
Okadoch. So we have one speaker for number two. So, unless somebody has an issue, they can all go to consent.
Could I just ask you, and I'm sorry, I should have asked you before we started, is number two, are we installing radio stuff? I just didn't know which, anybody? Okay. Okay, yep, that's all I needed, thanks. I just was curious.
Is everybody okay with ordinances and resolutions?
Yeah.
And then there's only one planning, and that's Victoria Walsh in District 5, and I'm okay with that going to consent. Oops, I'm sorry, and I'm okay with that as well, sorry.
Can I ask about that one? I was just noticing with the Atlantic Park development, there are 300 multifamily units proposed, Dam Neck Associates, which is already approved and so forth, is the numbers, as up to 612 apartment units, and of course, we did the silo project early this year. Can we have an accounting of how many units are actually in the pipeline? I don't mean just out there at some point, but the ones that are actually under site plan approval and construction? I think we've got quite a lot. I know there's Westminster Canterbury, and there's quite a few around the city. Could we find out just what is in the pipeline and what the construction timeframe is expected to be?
Absolutely, we'll look to get it.
Yeah, I think it's, you know, but Barbara, I think it's also important, I think we are desperate for housing inventory in the city of Virginia.
Well, that's true, and looking at these, they're not workforce housing, most, many of these are, I think, upper-income housing, but I think we really need to have a view of just what is coming, so that we know what's out there that's pretty imminent within the next year or two to be built, and we can have a better idea of what is needed and where it's needed and what's coming and so forth.
Okay.
If I could say something about Dam Neck Associates, I think that they are playing to the military, it's right there in front of Dam Neck, and so I think their hope is that that's, a lot of military families are going to be living there, and as we all know, they are really desperate for housing.
You know, as my role with Hampton Roads Military Federal Facilities Alliance, we went to the Pentagon a little over a year ago, and I have two major concerns. Number one, housing, and this is important for military readiness in terms of recruitment and retention, and the other thing, believe it or not, was daycare, things of that nature. And, but the other thing is, you know, you know, we often get put down a bit for, you know, building, but the other thing is that creates, not only for places to live, but it increases tax revenue that we're going to need in the future if we're going to be bringing in those businesses and industry that are going to create those new revenue streams that we're going to need to confront our future obligations.
Just to carry on what you just said, Director Kirschman's sitting back here, and during COVID, you know, remember Parks and Rec really stepped up and helped a lot of our employees so that they could get to work, because a lot of the private daycares had shut down, and they picked up the pace, especially for public safety, so.
Great point.
Shout out for them, but it's always an issue. Housing and daycare seems to be the top two.
Yeah, and I'll tell you what, trust me, it's controversial in every state and every municipality right now. There is a national housing crisis, and, but once again, and if you don't create the inventory, that limits the scope, and that makes the cost of buying a home very expensive. So even though somebody might move into a higher-end, you know, house, it creates a vacuum in the previous facility. All right, is that it, Rosemary? Okay.
And, Mr. Mayor, before you go, I just wanted to take a privilege and introduce our new economic development director, Christian Greig.
Fantastic.
All right, welcome.
So I think this is Christian's second week with us in Virginia Beach?
I've been asking about you.
I think it's my last name.
I like his last name.
What's your last name?
It's Christian Greig.
Oh!
But he's going to make cash for us.
I like that, that's good, Bobby.
Welcome to the neighborhood.
Yes.
Thank you, Patrick. Okay, the chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from open meeting allowed by Section 2.23711A. Code of Virginia is amended for the following purposes. Legal matters, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to the actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiation or litigating posture of the public body pursuant to Section 2.23711A7. Richard R.K. Kowalowicz versus City of Virginia Beach. Loomwood Branch at all versus City of Virginia Beach. Latasha Holloway versus City of Virginia Beach. And next, publicly held property. Discussions or considerations of the acquisition of real property for public purpose or of the disposition of publicly held property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.23711A3, that's District 5. And public contract, discussions of the award of public contract involving the expenditure of public funds and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract where discussions in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or the negotiation strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.23711A29. And that would be the Sunrise Festival and Virginia Beach Gentlemen's Cost Participation Agreement. And then finally, personnel matters, discussions, considerations, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific officers, appointees, or employees of any public body pursuant to Section 2.23711A1, and that would be for boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Councilor Bilochi?
Aye.
Councilor Incey?
Aye.
Councilor Hudson?
Aye.
Councilor Jackson?
Aye.
Councilor Robinson?
Aye.
Lieutenant Wilson?
Aye.
Lieutenant Tyler?
Aye.
Okay, we are recessed into clo-